All to order. Okay, well, welcome to the regular monthly meeting of the Board of Commissioners held for the purpose of transacting the general business of the township. Today's date is February 10th, 2021. Due to the social distancing guidelines and the regulations imposed by the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania on indoor gatherings, this meeting is being conducted remotely utilizing the Zoom video conference platform. Instructions for accessing the meeting and for submitting public comment were made available on the township's website in advance of the meeting. Please stand and join the Board of Commissioners in a moment of silent reflection honoring the servicemen and women who place themselves in harm's way in order to help preserve our safety at home and overseas. Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic, for which it stands.
One nation, under God.
Indivisible, with liberty.
Liberty, justice for all.
Okay. I can entertain a motion dispensing with the reading of the minutes of the previous meeting as written and recorded in the official minute book of the township. Do I have a motion?
Second, oh, motion, sorry.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, great, okay, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay, okay, we will descend to the minutes then, okay. And we are, I believe we are all here and we have no.
There's Eddie, too.
I show there's Eddie, Eddie, is there, how'd your meeting go?
Oh, there he is.
Uh, what, great.
Oh, good.
I just.
Clearly still at the library.
All right. Well, you missed Commissioner Cobb's nickname.
What, what, what is that, Superman?
It was Kitten Cobbs, Kitten Cobbs, Kitten Cobbs. Kitty Cobb, right, yeah.
I'm gonna leave that one alone, I'll call Jonathan later and find out.
Yeah, he said, he had it on there and he asked Brandon, how do I get this off of here?
Better than the word that was uttered at the impeachment trial today.
Oh, I didn't see that.
Similar description.
All right. Let me see, I like to announce that the Board of Commissioners conducted an executive session meeting on February 8th, 2021, as part of the regularly scheduled workshop meeting to discuss two personal matters and one item of litigation. Due to limitations on the size of indoor public gatherings, all regular and special meetings of the Board of Commissioners and Township Advisory Boards will continue to occur virtually using the Zoom video conferencing platform until further notice. Meeting details and instructions on how to access meetings can be found on the Township's website, www.springfieldmontco.org, in advance of each meeting. In my capacity as Board President and on behalf of the entire Board of Commissioners of Springfield Township, I would like to commend the members of the Springfield Township Public Works Department for the exemplary performance during the back-to-back snowstorms our community experienced over the past week and a half. On February 1st and 7th, the Township received 16 inches of snow, which required us to issue multiple snow emergencies due to the amount of expected snowfall. Over the course of the five days impacted by both storms, our hardworking and dedicated Public Works employees put in 1,358 man-hours preparing and repairing their equipment, salting, brining local roads, roadways, clearing sidewalks at over 20 properties and plowing snow. A total of 6,610 miles of roadway were covered between salting and plowing and 581 tons of salt were used to treat every public road in the township. In addition to the exemplary work performed by the Public Works Department to combat the storms, the department then covered an additional 20 man-hours and 189 miles on Wednesday, February 3rd, to collect residential refuse and recycling from the Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday collection routes. The steadfast resolve of the Township's Public Works Employees to provide such a high level of service is commendable. We thank each of them for their hard work and for their ongoing dedication to the residents of Springfield Township. The Board would also like to thank the general public of the Township for their cooperation removing their vehicles from the roadways during the snow emergencies, adhering to the local snow and ice removal guidelines and waiting to place their trash and recycling containers out until the morning of collection. The public's assistance allowed our Public Works team to efficiently plow and clear our township streets and to complete trash and recycling collection in a timely and effective manner. In closing, thank you once again for the tremendous effort that was collectively put forth by the Springfield Township Public Works Department and the citizenry of Springfield Township. What a great job.
Yeah, hear, hear, good job.
And hopefully, we won't have to see any more of that this year, but we never know about that. Okay, so now the public portion of the meeting, the Board is now open to comments or questions from the public. The Board draws particular attention to those items listed on the agenda this evening. Please be advised that once the committee reports begin, the Board can no longer accept questions from the floor. At the conclusion of the committee reports, public comment will once again be accepted. However, official action on the issues listed on the agenda will have already taken place. Therefore, if you wish to comment on an agenda item now would be the appropriate time. So do we have any questions or comments? Somebody's, I'm going to admit, somebody into the, into our room here, there we go. No questions or comments, we have no emails sent in. Okay, so, well, we'll give everybody a chance at the end. All right, then we'll just go on to the committee reports and I will kick it off. I move that the Board of Commissioners reappoint Angela Murray, George Schaefer, and David Sands to new four-year terms of service as members of the Springfield Township Planning Commission. The new term of service shall expire on February 16th, 2025, and that is my motion. Do I hear a second? Okay. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay, okay. Eyes have it, okay, please record a unanimous vote. Next, we will move to the Chairman of our Community Development Committee, I'm sorry, that's me, Chairman of our Internal Affairs and Library Committee, Commissioner Harbison.
Thank you, Mr. President. Item two on the agenda is the February bill listing. I move that the Board of Commissioners approve the January check reconciliation in the amount of $578,637.36 in the February bill listing and the amount of $486,494.70. That is my motion.
Thank you, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, any questions or comments on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote.
Thank you. Item three, Resolution Number 1519. I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt Resolution Number 1519, a resolution amending the schedule of fees charged for services rendered by the Township tax collector. The fees are associated with services performed outside of the normal duties of the tax collector. That is my motion.
Thank you, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, any questions or comments on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Please, nay, okay, please record two, two nays, okay, please record a five to two vote in favor.
Okay, moving on, the next item is number four, which is Resolution 1520. In compliance with Pennsylvania Act 428 of 1968, I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt Resolution Number 1520, a resolution authorizing the disposition of township records as set forth in a list of files and records attached to Resolution Number 1520, totaling approximately 20 boxes. That is my motion.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, any questions or comments on the motion?
I just had one question. Do we then shred all this stuff or do we give it to some third party or what?
You're muted, Mike.
Some of it is shredded if it has confidential information on it, in the case of social security numbers and things of that nature, which would be principally from our employees, but most of it is just recycled.
Recycled, okay, fine, sure. And, and just for, for clarification, because I do see it as a problem sometimes in the, in the recycling. We don't encourage people to recycle shredded material, do we?
No, we do not.
They, it's just trash or if you can compost it.
Shredded paper is, yeah, you can compost it or throw it out in the regular trash.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we have a second and we have questions or comments, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and, and the opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote.
Thank you. The next is item five, Resolution Number 1521. I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt Resolution 1521, a resolution appointing the Township Manager and Finance Director as the Township's primary and alternate voting delegates to the Montgomery County Tax Collection Committee. The primary responsibility of the Tax Collection Committee is to appoint a designated tax officer for the collection of earned income taxes. That is my motion.
Thank you, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, any questions or comments on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Okay, please record a unanimous vote.
Thank you. Item six is payroll services. On November 19, 2020, Springfield Township issued a request for proposals to provide payroll processing services, tax filing, and remittance, and data interface services for the township. A total of four proposals were received with an annual cost ranging from just over 8,000 to just under 12,000. Following the evaluation of each proposal, Township staff has recommended the Township engage the services of AcuPay Inc. of Hatborough, Pennsylvania, based upon their familiarity with servicing municipal governments of the same size and complexity, strength of support staff, and value. Therefore, I move that the Board of Commissioners authorize the execution of an agreement with AcuPay Inc. of Hatborough, PA, to provide weekly and bi-weekly payroll processing and reporting services in accordance with their proposals submitted November 30th, 2020. The estimated annual cost is $8,685. Prior to executing the agreement with AcuPay, it shall be in a form acceptable to the Township Solicitor's Office. That is my motion.
Thank you, and do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, any questions or comments on the motion?
I just have one question and that relates to, was this amount included in our 2021 budget?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
We, this actually came in below what we had expected, which was between 12 and 18,000.
Great, so they all came in lower, right? I think the highest one was 11.
That's correct, Jim.
Yeah.
So, so is the 86, 85 an annual, the first annual fee or is that just for the rest of this year?
It, it's an annual fee and it's based on the number of payrolls that we have. So, because we're not going to start until the second quarter, beginning of the second quarter, it'll actually be less than the 86, 85.
Okay. So we have a second and we have the questions, comments taken care of, so, uh, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Okay, please record a unanimous vote.
And finally, for me, item number seven, Resolution Number 1522. On July 13, 2016, the Board of Commissioners authorized the participation in a joint project of the Montgomery County Consortium of Communities to negotiate a new cable television franchise agreement with Verizon. The negotiations were led by the Cohen Law Group of Pittsburgh, PA, and were recently completed. As part of the renewal process, the Board of Commissioners conducted a public hearing on May 8th, 2019, to solicit testimony on the past performance of Verizon and to accept public testimony on the cable television needs of the community. No public comment was received. Due to changes in the cable industry, technology advancements, and the regulatory landscape affecting the wired cable industry, there is presently not a great deal of latitude for municipalities to negotiate the provisions of an agreement. In summary, the major provisions of the proposed agreement are as follows, but not limited to. One, franchise fees, a maximum 5% of gross revenues shall be remitted to the township. Two, accountability, new auditing provisions, penalties for underpayments, and the calculation of bundled services discounts were added. Three, termination clause, Verizon must demonstrate a 6% loss in subscribers over a continuous 12-month period before it may terminate the agreement and must provide the township with 12 months' notice of its intent to terminate. Four, education and government access channels, Verizon will continue to reserve the right for the municipality to obtain a dedicated space on the basic service tier for an educational and governmental, E.G., channel. And five, the term, which is five years. Therefore, I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt Resolution Number 1522, a resolution authorizing the execution of a cable franchise agreement between Springfield Township and Verizon, Pennsylvania LLC. That is my motion.
Thank you, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, any questions or comments on the motion?
I just have one comment, I think that anybody listening to us should understand that this is, and they have Verizon as a cable provider, should understand that this fee appears on their, on their bill every month, should be about 5% of, of what their charges are. And then Verizon remits 100% of that fee to the township, isn't that correct, Mike?
Correct.
It's correct, but it's a little misleading in that we used to get the whole darn bill, but because data is a very piece of it, we don't get a cut of the data. It's only the cable piece, right, Mike?
That's correct.
So that it's not, as much as your bill keeps going up, we don't keep going up, unfortunately. Cable cutters, we don't get anything from them.
Yeah, the cable and cable related services, so your equipment boxes and those types of things, those are part of the franchise fee, but any internet services or any telephone services are not.
And it's in line with what Comcast charges as well.
Correct.
Yes.
Right.
And we, and we have no, and we have no discretion over that 5%, it just sort of is dictated to us and that's.
That's the maximum you can collect.
And that's the same amount as currently, currently, we're currently getting 5%.
Correct.
Right. And I understand that it was a sort of an arduous negotiation and we more or less got what we wanted, but this is a shorter term than, it's a five-year term and apparently Comcast is a little more of a long-term player, you know, and has more invested in, in both sides of the service, you know, the internet and the TV. And I guess Verizon, I guess they, they're eventually, they, they would rather stay with the, the phone and the internet and not so much the, the cable, but so that's why there's a five-year term and not anything more than that, but.
So did the last contract have this provision that if they lost customers, they could break the contract?
They, it did not, Pete. The last contract was the first contract with Verizon when they built their infrastructure and they were interested in securing a cable franchise agreement, although initially, and again, they took the position that they were exempt because they viewed their FIO system as more of an internet service than a, a cable, a wired cable service, although they were certainly going to provide TV through it. But the original agreement was a 10-year agreement and this current one, we wanted to get a little bit longer agreement as well because it's costly to go through the process, but they would only agree to a maximum of a five-year term.
And the big issue when we did that first agreement was getting them to commit to build out to the whole township and not just cherry pick.
Yeah.
Neighborhoods, and they agreed, they were pretty accommodating because they were coming in and they were going to give Comcast to run for their money, so that was, it was a good deal for everybody. But note that the first thing in this, in what I just read, said that we began this process in July of 2016, so that's four and a half years ago that we started to negotiate this. It's slow. But with basically, this is the best we can do, we hired the, it's not that bad, we hired the Cohen Law Group of Pittsburgh as the law firm that this, that's what they do. You know, they're the hired gun you bring in, they're like the best agent in Hollywood for this, so get you the best deal, and that's all we can ask for, it's just not as good as you might want.
Yeah. Anyway, Mr. Cohen used to be my, one of my dad's law partners way back when, so.
Yeah. And, and they have also withdrawn the free service to the schools and the township buildings under this contract?
It's, it's provided, but most of our schools and our township buildings utilize the Comcast service, so we don't have a redundancy there, and they're allowed to utilize it towards the 5% franchise fee or franchise, gross receipts on the franchise, so we're going to continue with the Comcast.
Comcast, yeah. And is the Comcast deal relatively the same 5% deal?
Uh, yes, well, not, not on the cable service to the facilities.
No, no, but I mean, overall to the township, when it comes to gross risk, gross income.
Yes.
5%, we get 5% of what they get, I mean.
There's actually a most favored nation clause in the Comcast agreement, so if we agreed to anything less on the Verizon, it would transfer over, so that's why it was important to us to make sure we got the 5%.
Right, right.
Yeah, and Comcast also provided a technology grant, they had a separate, separate thing, so.
But the, the challenge is, and I think the thing that we need to be cognizant about as we move forward is, it's not a small amount of revenue for the township and as people cut cords, cut the cable cord and move towards more, you know, inter, internet-based entertainment, that will, that, that revenue line will decrease significantly.
Okay, that was my motion.
All right, so, and we have a second, so, uh, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Okay, please record a unanimous vote.
And that concludes my report, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Harbison. Okay, next we will move to the Chairman of our Cultural and Environmental Resources Committee, Commissioner Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. President, I have a report and I have a motion. So the report is on recycling for the month and I'm pleased to report that during the month of January 2021, Springfield Township residents recycled 198.45 tons of materials with a householder participation rate of 79.3%. The net costs for the month was $29,351.57. And my motion is in regard to the recycling services agreement. I move that the Board of Commissioners authorize the appropriate township officials to execute an addendum to the October 22, 2015 Agreement for Recycling Services between the Montgomery County Consortium of Recycling Communities and Solid Waste Services, Inc., doing business as JP Mosquero and Sons, Inc., in order to extend the agreement and pricing schedule attached to the agreement through October 21, 2021. The extension is necessary in order to permit the recycling consortium to complete several studies that will be incorporated into a future bid for the processing and marketing of materials. That is my motion.
Thank you, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, any questions or comments on the motion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Okay, please record a unanimous vote.
That concludes my reports.
Thank you, Commissioner Wilson. Okay, next we will move to the Chairman of our Parks and Recreational Resources Committee, Commissioner Graham.
Thank you, Mr. President, I have three motions and an announcement. I'll start with the motions first. The bylaws of the Springfield Township Park and Recreation Advisory Committee stated that the committee will be comprised of seven members, two of whom shall be appointed by the School Board of Directors and one of whom shall be a school board member. The school district has recommended the appointment of Mr. Joseph Fiera, Springfield Township High School Athletic Director, fill an unexpired term of service as a service district representative to the Parks and Recreation Committee. Therefore, I move that the Board of Commissioners appoint Joseph Fiera, Fiera, Springfield Township High School Athletic Director, to fill an unexpired term of service as a member of the Springfield Township Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee. Mr. Fiera's term of service shall expire on May the 12th, 2023. That is my motion.
Thank you, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, any questions or comments on the motion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any, any opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Okay, please record a six to one vote in favor of this motion.
Thank you, Mr. President, my second motion is that I move that the Board of Commissioner authorize the submission of a letter of intent to the School Kill River Restoration Program requesting up to $51,900 for the Memorial Park Habitat Restoration Project. That is my motion.
Thank you, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, any questions or comments on the motion?
My only comment would be that it's not Memorial Park, it's, it's Mermaid Park, right?
My apologies, Mermaid Park, you're absolutely right.
We don't want to give the, you know, somebody else the wrong park the money anyway.
Exactly right.
Give it to White Marsh or somebody. Okay, okay, and we have a second? Who had, who gave us a second?
Yeah.
Okay, great, okay. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay, okay, please record a unanimous vote.
Thank you, and thank you for the correction, Commissioner Wilson. My fi, my final, uh, uh, motion is that I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt Resolution Number 1523, a resolution authorizing application to the Montco 2040 Implementation Grant Program for the Cisco Park Playground Restoration and Walnut Avenue Pedestrian Walkway Project. Value of each project is $200,000. That is my motion.
Thank you, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, any questions or comments on the motion? Okay.
I mean, we're, the, my only comment is, I, you know, we're, we're, we're hoping for this, there's no guarantee, right? I mean, we know Brandon does, and, and Mike do a wonderful job getting these, all these grants, but there's no guarantee we're going to get this one, right?
That's correct, you can apply for two, but you, the best case scenario is you get funded by, for one.
Yeah. Okay, well, we're, yep, we're, they're both very worthwhile projects, so we'll keep our fingers crossed.
Yep. Okay, so all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any others say nay, okay, please record a unanimous vote.
And my final announcement is for the Parkland donations, the Board of Commissioners wish to recognize the generous donations received from these residents and the Bectiva Benai Jeserum Synagogue. The following donations were received. Douglas Reo Dan gave a donation in the amount of $160, $160 to Cisco Park. Edna Ramirez gave a donation in the amount of $250 for a memorial tree to the Laurel Beach Park. The Bectiva Benai Jeserum Synagogue gave a donation in the amount of $500 to be used for Cisco Park. And finally, Bruce Charrick gave a donation in the amount of $1,000 to be used for a memorial bench in for Falconetti Park. On behalf of the Board of the Commissioners and the Springfield Township community, I wish to thank the aforementioned individuals and the synagogue for their generous donations. That concludes my report, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Graham. So next we'll move to the Chairman of our Public Safety Committee, Commissioner Maxwell.
Thank you, Mr. President, I have a few items this evening. First is ordinance number 969. I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt ordinance number 969 and ordinance amending Chapter 49 insurance, insurances of the Code of the Township of Springfield to repeal and replace Article 1 Fire Insurance Claims. To update the procedures for the issuance of a certificate prior to payment of fire law. of fire loss insurance claims for properties located in the township. The proposed ordinance also increases the escrow provisions required for each claim and addresses the use of funds to guarantee the removal or repair of fire damaged structures. That is my motion.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on the motion? Okay, hearing none. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed say nay? Please record a unanimous vote.
Next item, stop sign on Moreland Ave. I move that the Board of Commissioners amend the Springfield Township Code, Section one oh seven dash twenty Schedule five, stop intersections by authorizing the installation of a stop sign on Moreland Avenue Windmore in a westbound direction at its intersection with Pine Road. Stop condition and associated striping are intended to provide direction to motorists at the subject intersection. That is my motion.
Thank you. Do we have a second? There you go. Commissioner Cobb, Graham, okay?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on the motion? I for one would like to know when they're going to install it because I want to be the first guy to stop at that stop sign.
See if we can get it expedited for you, Bear.
Oh, good, okay, great. All right.
Permafrost to thaw out, though.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed say nay? Okay, please record a unanimous vote.
Uh, next is concerning parking regulations on Woolgrove Ave. There's two of them. I move that the Board of Commissioners amend the Springfield Township Code, Section one oh seven dash thirty-three, Schedule ten, parking time limited by repealing the existing parking regulations on the south side of Woolgrove Ave, Elm Street to Queen Street. That is my motion.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on the motion? Okay.
Yeah, I just want to comment, this is being done to accommodate the merchants, to accommodate the merchants who have, sometimes have customers there more than an hour.
Yep. And that'll be the second motion. Okay, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed say nay? Okay, please record a unanimous vote.
Next item, I moved that the Board of Commissioners amend the Springfield Township Code, Section one oh seven dash thirty-three, Schedule ten, parking time limited by establishing limited parking for a maximum time of two hours, Monday through Saturday, eight AM to six PM on the south side of Woolgrove Avenue from Elm Street to Queen Street. The parking regulations are intended to benefit local businesses and patrons. That is my motion.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you. All, well, we've talked about it already. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay? Okay, please record a unanimous vote.
Next is for police officer appointment. Before I read this, Mr. Taylor, can I get the correct pronunciation of the last name again?
Sure, it's Padua.
Okay, thank you.
Padua.
I move that the Board of Commissioners extend a conditional offer of employment to Megan Lynn Padua of Harley'sville, PA as a probationary police officer with the Springfield Township Police Department. The offer of employment is conditioned upon Ms. Padua successfully completing a medical and psychological examination and shall become effective February twenty ninth, two thousand and twenty-one. Ms. Padua is a veteran of the Pennsylvania Army National Guard and is currently employed as a police officer with the City of Philadelphia. Ms. Padua's appointment will fill a vacancy created by the retirement of a police officer in May of two thousand and twenty. That is my motion.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on the motion?
The only comment I would make is that it's my understanding this would make our third female officer. Is that correct?
Yep.
Out of a, out of a thirty person plus or minus force?
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine, okay.
Yeah, it's great.
Ten percent.
There we are. Okay. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay? Please record a unanimous vote.
And that will conclude my report for this evening.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Maxwell. So next we will move to the Chairman of our Zoning Committee, Commissioner Cobb.
Thank you, Mr. President. The next meeting of the zoning hearing board of Springfield Township will be held on Monday, February twenty-second at seven PM through the Zoom format in which we will hear two applications. The first application is from Lauren and Robert Wise of the property located at thirteen twelve Bradford Road in Orland, PA. The applicants are seeking several variances for proposed construction of an in-ground pool within the rear yard of their property. However, the location of the proposed pool, pool decking and the required fencing will be within the limits of the floodplain as defined by FEMA. So variances are required for these type, types of improvements within the defined limits of, of the floodplain. So that will be the first application. The second application will be from Carmel and Dale Archdeacon, owners of the property located at eighty-eight twenty-one Patton Road in Windmore. They are also seeking several dimensional variances for a proposed construction on, of an addition to the side of the home that will encroach five feet into the required front and side yard setback areas. The proposed addition is plotting as being twenty-two feet from the side property line and forty-five feet from the front property line. So those will be the two applications that will be heard on Monday, February twenty-second at seven PM through our Zoom format. And that's my report.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Cobb. So next we will go to the Chairman of our Public Works and Facilities Committee, Commissioner Lee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have two items this evening. The first, relation to sale of township equipment. I move that in accordance with Section fifteen oh one of the Pennsylvania First Class Township Code, the Board of Commissioners authorize the sale the following used vehicles and equipment through the municipal online public auction site. Two thousand and six Chevrolet Trailblazer, two thousand and eleven Chevrolet Tahoe, and the two thousand and twelve Chevrolet Tahoe. Trailblazer will be listed for sale immediately while the other two vehicles will be offered for sale upon the delivery of new replacement vehicles later this year. That is my motion.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Thank you. Any questions or comments on the motion? Okay, hearing none. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay? Please record a unanimous vote.
Jeff, just in case, do you have a nay ready on the sign? In case you need it.
Nobody know.
I saw the yay.
Nobody noticed I switched. Did you catch? I switched.
No.
See, I have to know.
Yay and a.
Now, the only other one I have is this one. I don't know how. No.
Hope you don't have to use that one.
Call the police.
Nine one one.
My second item is relation to seventeen twenty-five Walnut Avenue. I move that the Board of Commissioners authorize the appropriate township officials to execute an additional services agreement number six with BL Companies, Inc., to perform additional site assessment activities as outlined in their proposal dated January fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, revised February ninth, two thousand and twenty-one. Cost of the additional services, seven thousand, two hundred dollars. That is my motion.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on the motion?
So just so, so the public understands what's this for? It's for the tank car site, isn't it? For drilling, drilling more wells, more sample wells?
That's correct, Pete. It's for one additional shallow water monitoring well and for geophysical survey and, and the soft dig excavation prior to the installation of the deep water monitoring wells.
And we're required to do this to by DEP to?
This is part of your Act Two Compliance Plan.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed say nay? Please record a unanimous vote.
Anyone need help? Say help. Thank you, Mr. President. That concludes my report.
Hey, thank you, Commissioner Lee. Okay, so that concludes the committee reports. And I will now move back to the public portion of the meeting. The board is now open to comment, comments or questions from the board. And of course, we've been through the agenda, so all actions have been taken, taken place, but anybody that wants to make a comment or ask a question, please do so now. And I hear none and.
Fair, what's the, there's someone in the waiting room. Is that, is that someone that's?
Is there some, I don't, I don't see anybody.
I've seen it up there, two, one.
The number jumped on and then jumped off.
They were on and off, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, Brandon actually let them in, but the, the pop-up stayed on, so they were in.
Oh, I see.
Okay.
And then they jumped right off.
Mr. President, would you indulge me in just reading something quickly?
Go right ahead. Yep.
And this is just kind of a code to what you opened the meeting with, but as you noted, with a lot of the, the large storms we've had of late, I have gotten a lot of feedback from a whole bunch of residents, and I thought this email was very emblematic of, of really all of them. But it was from a woman who said that, please give a special thanks at your next meeting to the Public Works Department. As a healthcare worker who must be in work regardless of the snow, I really greatly appreciate that they are out there early in the morning plowing the streets of our township. There is no township that has streets as well plowed as ours. The services in Springfield are top-notch, and this, among many other reasons, makes Springfield Township the best place to live. And that was from Rose Sevira over on Willow Road. And again, it's, it's really, I think emblematic of a lot of the emails that I got after those storms. So again, for, for our Public Works Department, thank you.
That's great. Yeah, that's great. Thank you for sharing that.
Yeah, I was saying, I got an email tonight from somebody saying, oh, well, because we're in a Thursday trash pickup. Oh, with the storm tonight, should we put our trash out later tomorrow? And I said, absolutely not. We've all made that mistake. They're still coming at seven oh one, even though they've been up all night. They're incredible.
Yeah.
And I just, like I said, that, an email out to the, all of the commissioners concerning a thank you from our employees at the Springfield Library. A lot of times we don't really appreciate them because of the work that they do. But I know personally, the work that they do with our young people is, is just exemplary. So I'd just like to give a special thank, and they wanted to thank the Board of Commissioners for continuing their salary while we were out during the initial impact of COVID. But I just wanted to say personally that those, you ladies and gentlemen there at the Springfield Library are greatly appreciated. We love the service that you provide and our kudos to you for the service that you provide to all of our students and residents here in Springfield Township.
Yeah, you're here.
Yeah.
Yes, second that, Eddie. Yeah. Mary Catherine and her team do a incredible job and they really are a great resource for the township.
Yep. Okay. Well, that's, I guess wraps it up unless anybody has any more questions or comments or whatever. So why don't I ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Moved.
Okay, do I have a second?
Okay.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, okay, we are adjourned. See you next time. Thanks, everybody.
Hey, good night. Thanks.
Good night.
Good night.